Good evening, West Springfield. The March 2nd, 2022 meeting of the West Springfield Planning Board is hereby called to order at 6:00 PM. In accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, I must announce that anyone intending to tape the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk and provide his or her name and address for the record. And we inform those present that any document that is to be considered or discussed must be made part of the record of the meeting, and the original or a copy must be submitted to the committee before there will be any discussion regarding the document. Documents include photos, plans, drawings, computer pronouns, and simulation, video presentations, and the like, as well as letters and written materials. All right. We have a public hearing, 6:00 PM for WNT West Springfield LLC. Special permit application under Section 307.7, Planned Unit Development District for the reuse and renovation of the existing 8,425 square foot building for the operation of a 310-seat restaurant with an additional 2,800 square foot, 112-seat outdoor patio at the property located at 955 Riverdale Street in the Planned Unit Development Zoning District. That was one breath, by the way. Just wanted to pass that up. All right, if you want to come on up and tell us what you have going on. I like it, it's efficient.
Okay.
Name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Mike Gagnon with SLR Corporation. We reside in West Springfield, Massachusetts, 310 Main Street.
Thank you.
First of all, good evening. Thank you for having us. Accompanying me here with me is Mohammed Aju. He is going to be speaking to the traffic components or the traffic improvements associated with this project. I'm just going to go into a brief overview and talk about the various site improvements that are associated with this project. Essentially, as you read in the minutes, the project involves the renovation of the, what was the former Carrabba's Restaurant, located at 955 Riverdale Street. As shown on the site plan, the site is located on the east side of Riverdale Street and just north of the intersection with Morgan Road Extension. The site is located, as you all know, is located within the Riverdale Shops complex. The existing building is a single-story structure, 8,425 square feet. That is within a 104-space parking area that's associated with the immediate site. The project is located within your PUD zoning district. So just to kind of talk about some of the proposed improvements that are associated with this project. It will entail essentially the renovation of the existing building in the interior, along with the addition of an outdoor patio area for guests and for food service. The outdoor patio area will be approximately 2,800 square feet, and that will accommodate 112 seats for patrons. Mohammed, if you want to zoom in on what we're going to do is you're just going to zoom in on the site plan a little bit, just to kind of highlight that area.
Thank you.
Why don't you go to the next sheet? So this is the, this is the main, oh, hang on. There we go. So this is the site plan entitled Sheet SP. This essentially shows all of the proposed improvements that are associated with the project, including the outdoor patio area. He's just going to kind of zoom in on some of the detail here. So essentially, the existing building footprint is going to remain as it does today, as well as the majority of the parking area that surrounds the existing building, with the exception is there will be elimination of six parking spaces, four of which will be eliminated along the south side of the building to accommodate the patio area. And if you want to hover your cursor in that, right in that area there. As well as the main, the current entrance to the building, that's kind of kitty corner there off on the southwest side, that's actually going to be relocated up towards the west side of the building. And again, that's just so that that outdoor patio area can be secured, so to speak. And in addition to that, we are providing a new crosswalk that's going to be situated, as shown on the plan there. And what that will entail is that will involve two new islands that will be constructed within the parking area to allow for accessible access to the sidewalk that runs along, I believe there's a sidewalk there that runs along Morgan Road Extension, and essentially will cross that access drive into the parking area to the east. And that will facilitate safe passage of pedestrians, as necessary, to the facility. As I stated, there are no new utility services that are associated with this project. All of the existing services will be utilized, as well as stormwater. No stormwater improvements are anticipated. Relatively very minimal change in overall impervious cover associated with the project, and that's really as a result of the construction of the outdoor patio area. So I think at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mohammed, and he'll give a detailed discussion on the traffic elements of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Name is Mohammed Ajib with SLR, address 30 Carson Street, Boston. I'm going to go over the summary of traffic and parking study for the subject project. So this presentation is a brief summary of the parking and traffic study. I'm going to go over the study area, trip generation, traffic study results, parking study results, and conclusions and recommendations in the end. So first, I'd like to start with introduction. As Mike mentioned, the Wooden Tap is opening a new branch in West Springfield, and they're occupying, reoccupying an existing building that was previously a restaurant also. And that restaurant is Carrabba's, as many of you may know. So that's a key information to keep in mind, that the subject building was previously a restaurant, and the traffic that was generated by that previous restaurant was a factor in the current roadway network. For the traffic and parking studies, we conducted data collection, a task for weekday peak and Saturday peak also. And we actually observed a similar restaurant in Farmington, Connecticut, a wooden tap, so we can get an idea and compare the traffic trips generated. So the study area covered six intersections, two signalized, four stop-controlled, three of those stop-controlled inside the Plaza Shopping Center. And the parking counts covered two locations, the Stop &amp; Shop, the first three aisles of Stop &amp; Shop parking lot, and the parking for TD Bank across to the north. So in this slide, I'm also showing the trip generation that I just mentioned previously. If you see in the table at the bottom, there's a proposed and existing trip generation. Existing meaning the one that's similar, Wooden Tap Restaurant, that's in Farmington. And proposed restaurant, we determined the total PM peak hour trips and Saturday peak hour trips, based on IT data and equations. So you can see, kind of relative to an operating restaurant, compared to the conservative IT rates, how they are, how they compare. Yeah, exactly, yeah. So that table kind of emphasizes that. And the existing Wooden Tap Restaurant in Farmington, with the high operation activity, is currently less than what IT is projecting. So, but we did the study using IT as a conservative approach. Kind of, that's how we do things in traffic. So if you jump to the traffic study results, we noticed that for all the six, five of the six intersections, the existing level of service was similar to the future with minor changes. So the level of service for existing and future didn't change for the five of the six intersections. The intersection that I'm zooming in here is the one inside the Plaza, which has an interesting geometry. It showed just a slight increase in level of service. But something to consider is that when we did the analysis, we also did a more conservative approach for the northbound movement. We, so right now, it's a free flow for the northbound. We assumed this yield, kind of a conservative approach also. That's why you see, so for existing, the northbound is level service C for PM versus level service E and the, and the PM in the future. But that, that's just a result of our conservative approach, kind of analyzing what's the worst-case scenario. But something to note also, for stop-controlled intersections, level service E and F, which is kind of the lower, of the range of the level of service, are not of huge concern, because that's, there's a lot of factors. When it comes to stop-controlled intersections, the intersection geometry and other factors kind of affect the calculations of the level of service. But when you go in the field and notice the traffic for that level of service E or F, it's not as what the simulation shows. Specifically for stop-controlled is a common practice that we, we don't panic when we see E or F for stop control. So for this intersection, also, we observed that there's police officer presence at peak periods, which kind of helps also facilitate the movement. If there's any peak traffic that's causing any, maybe a queuing or something, there's a police officer that presents at the site. So that's something to keep in mind also. Next is parking study results. So as I mentioned before, we surveyed the Stop &amp; Shop parking and the TD Bank parking across to the north. So if you look at the top right, I have a summary of the zoning requirement for the parking, which is based on the number of seats and employees of the restaurant. So that number is 209, okay? That's why we surveyed additional parking options, which is also in the Plaza, and that's why we proposed the crossing, the crosswalk that Mike mentioned earlier. So from our previous, the survey at the similar Wooden Tap, that's high demand, we noticed that the parking is 50% and 71% utilization rate for Saturday and weekday, respectively. That's for an operating high-demand Wooden Tap Restaurant. And also, so for our current site, the Stop &amp; Shop has an abundant parking spaces. As you can see on the image to the left, there's 370 spaces that's going to be available. Most of those spaces, in addition to the 104 spaces on-site, that's like the most conservative scenario. That's 104 occupied, and there's people occupying across the street. So with those numbers and utilization rate of the Stop &amp; Shop, which is 27% at most for just the first three aisles, we think there's abundant parking. There shouldn't be an issue with parking at all. And in conclusion of this section, also, we recommended that crosswalk to facilitate, facilitate the parking, the clients, the customers are going to park at Stop &amp; Shop, and they want to cross safely. And also, I think for the shopping center in general, it's a nice safety feature for pedestrians to move across. So in conclusion, just summarizing again, the Stop, the Wooden Tap in West Springfield is reoccupying an existing restaurant that was Carrabba's, that was producing traffic earlier, and the traffic was in the roadway network. So the proposed restaurant is not adding much traffic, especially with similar use to the previous one, specifically restaurant. The results of the traffic study show similar traffic operations before and after opening a wooden tap at off-site intersections, except that intersection that I talked about, which is, we don't anticipate an issue. At the off-site intersections, we noticed some delays that were already existing and were continuing in the future. So we're proposing or...
Excuse me, which intersection are you referring to?
The off-site intersections, that's two signalized intersections. The Riverdale and Morgan, Riverdale and Daggett. Those two showed level service F or E for some movements in existing conditions, and that contained in future. So we ran signal optimizations, and we found that it could be improved with just signal timing changes that could be done easily. So that's something to keep in mind. Parking study conclusion and results indicate that there's enough parking supply for the Wooden Tap, West Springfield location, as the parking study showed previously. We recommend a new pedestrian crosswalk to facilitate the movement of customers from the Stop &amp; Shop parking to the restaurant safely. And I think that's it. These are the conclusions, and thank you.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions for him while he's still up here?
I'm sorry, is it Mohammed or Muhammed? Is it Mu? Mu. I want to get that right. My concern when I first looked at the plan, of course, is the crosswalk. And the reason that I bring that up is I'm curious to know why you chose that particular location for the crosswalk, knowing that, as you said, you knew that there was a police officer that typically is at that intersection that heads down towards the entrance to the Stop &amp; Shop location. And so it seems a little bit close to me. And the reason that I'm saying that, particularly once this proposed patio is open, it always seems that people want to park as close to the area that they're going to be sitting in. And I'm thinking that the Stop &amp; Shop may get more parking use than the backside of the building. So that, that's the reason that I'm looking at that. Was there any consideration to moving it down? And I'm not sure if there's, it seems that there is an entry to the patio. I'm not sure if that's going to be the main entry to the patio once that's open, or if they're going to have to enter into the building to get onto the patio. So that would be one question for you.
I can answer a bit, but you can add to it. Yeah, so the crosswalk location, from the traffic perspective, it's good, because it's a short distance. If you look at the site plan I have up, this is the shortest crossing for pedestrians, compared to if you move it down a little bit, or... And especially that it's at a stop bar, like two stop bars, two approaches are stopping, so there's more attention to pedestrian crossing, compared to if you move it up, like here in the plan, and this driveway. It's less safer. So that's why we chose this. And, yeah, that's from the traffic perspective, unless you answer that.
Michael Hamlin, Wooden Tap, 15 Rock Landing, Haddon Lake, Connecticut. Sorry, I just moved, so I had to think about where I live. So the patio you would have to get to from the inside, so the hostess would have to seat you. There's no, like, entrance to it at any particular point, and then the sidewalk will be open to walk around it. And then an additional note on the parking at Stop &amp; Shop is that probably 80% of that will be employees that park over there, so that we leave the spaces near the restaurant open for the customers. So it will be a little bit more controlled as who's crossing back and forth, you know, on a daily basis.
That's a good idea.
Do you mind if I ask one more question? The lighting there is, you know, I haven't really paid attention much, because I travel through that area so much so at nighttime. Is there significant lighting on that road that leads towards Daggett Drive? I don't really know myself. I'm just asking if that was taken into consideration. And is there going to be, you know, I recognize that everybody is familiar with pedestrians having the right-of-way when they see a crosswalk, but there's so much traffic there. Is there going to be a blinking light or anything? It's just the crosswalk, believe it or not, is my main concern. So, and then I'll let the other...
Mike, do you want to... For the lighting?
Yeah, can you please come up to the microphone, just so it's on record?
Yeah, Mike Gagnon, again with SLR, relative. I believe the lighting that you're talking about is the site lighting fixtures, so to speak. And I think the intent is to retain the existing site lighting that is out there now. No new proposed light fixtures are proposed on the site. I don't know if there's going to be any additional fixtures on the building. You know, there might be some relocation of some of the sconces on the exterior of the building, particularly with the relocation of the main entrance. But, you know, I think in a nutshell, the lighting is going to retain just as it is today. Thank you.
I think, I think the concern I have, and I think a couple of the board members shared as well, is that that area is kind of dark, and although this isn't directly your problem, it may be your problem, because we have a hard enough time getting people to stop at the stop sign that's not lit up, and it's dark. So I guess, at least what's running through my mind, is it'd be great if we could have some lighting there, so that the walkways lit up, and at a minimum, a walk sign that flashes or something if somebody hits it. I don't even know if that's a possibility in that area, or what the right-of-way is. But the idea that we could expect people to yield for people walking across the street sounds good, but I don't have a lot of confidence in drivers, to be very candid.
So I can just add, there is a light that casts over the intersection on the Stop &amp; Shop side, but there isn't one on the other side. Well, there is, but it faces into the parking lot of this site, so it wouldn't be lighting up that half of the roadway. And as far as right-of-way, it's owned by, I think DDR, the complex owner. It's not a town road.
Is DDR Stop &amp; Shop as well?
Yeah, it's all... They're different entities, but it's all owned by DDR.
Perfect, thank you.
So, Michael Hamlin for Wooden Tap. I mean, we would be willing to take our parking lot light and turn that so it lights up that walkway more. And obviously, and you would put the white stripes in there, that'll pop it out a little more. And then, I'm perfectly fine with putting a walk pedestrian sign on the road, like has some kind of a, it's illuminated, so people can see that that's, you know, a safety area. That's fine with me, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that I had the same concern. I drive in that plaza all the time. A lot of people don't stop for anybody in the crosswalks. They don't even stop at the stop sign. And I know that there is a police officer there, but it's usually only on Saturdays, maybe Friday nights, or more during the holidays. So my concern is, a lot of people go out to dinner later, so it's going to be darker out when they, you know, want to walk to their cars or your employees. I guess what would make, I would like to see is like what we have in front of the post office. It's just a sign, and if someone wants to walk by, they press a button, and a person like flashes, letting the vehicles know, someone is walking across, so you better stop. You know, that's just my comment, because I think it is a little darker in that area. And I think, I don't think that you can rely on everyone stopping for the stop crosswalk, because that area is very busy, because a lot of people are coming in from Costco, they're coming in from Michael's, or they're turning in from the opposite direction. So I think a crosswalk is great, but I think we need something more so that people can see that somebody is going to walk across, because I'd hate for someone to get hurt, especially if it was one of your employees.
No, trust me, I don't want anybody to be hurt. And then, and then, that lot primarily would be used like Friday, Saturday. Most of the time, I don't think it would be really used that much, because the bank is empty at night, and then people park there as well. So that's kind of like our overflow parking. So really, it's Friday, Saturday night that you would get the crosswalk, you know, with potentially pedestrians slash, you know, employees. But I'm okay with putting in something that illuminates, at least just to draw the attention, because we all know that people don't pay attention these days.
Thank you.
Mohammed, what do you mean by signal timing optimization? You mean changing the light?
So signal timing is, you know, how the signal, there's like green, yellow, red, and the cycle length for each intersection. So that signal optimization, meaning you reallocate the timing for each approach, or kind of optimize it, change, give the impacted approach a little bit more time. So the level of service improves.
I guess I imagined that, but how do we get that?
DOT already has implemented adaptive signalization. It's mass, it's the state's jurisdiction. They've already done it for Costco. It was a, they did it as part of that project, so it's already in place. And it's cloud-based, it varies, depending on how many cars are actually passing through the intersection. It's like a smart...
I understand, okay. Because I just saw some things that were like recommendations, you know, at the end, in your conclusions of your PowerPoint. I just was wondering who's going to be implementing these. So obviously, if you're going to put in the pedestrian crosswalk, that's fine. Again, I think my concern too is with this crosswalk. You know, the traffic, we've been pretty good with, you know, like parking spaces, but each one that we've done sort of was like, you know, the tandem. People could park behind the bank, and they never had to cross anything, or, you know, I even, I think, was it B Napoli or whatever? There's a light that, you know, people could cross that. So I guess the other thing, like, I'm looking at this, and your IT data, like, what method do they use to come up with this? Because I know that Carrabba's hasn't been around for a while, so I don't know what time period they were evaluating. So I just don't know, was it like yearly data that they calculate, or?
So IT, what they do is they survey, so for example, the use, if it's a restaurant, use, or maybe apartment, or retail, or something. So what they do is they collect information from different shopping centers, different residential developments and restaurants, and then they develop an equation that, for us, we use to calculate the trips for a new development. For example, we put, we use the size of the building into these equations that were developed based on surveys of different similar uses across the state.
This is like historical data?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you factor in growth from that, or?
They update it, yeah, they try to update it like every few years, so the data is not like old.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, because like, again, you know, if we're looking at data from, I don't, how long has the Carrabba's been empty?
Yeah, so I think the data for Carrabba's was based upon the square footage of when it was occupied, and the new data, so the restaurant will be expanding. There was an empty tenant space in the building when Carrabba's was in there, so it'll be expanding a little bit, plus the patio area. That accounts for the difference. If they were simply reoccupying the same space that Carrabba's was in, the traffic counts would be identical, because they're based upon the equation, like he said. It's an average, like normalized number, based upon... It's, it's an average, like normalized number based upon, um, nationwide data that they've compiled. It's not site, site-specific other than you plug in square footage or what have you.
Got it.
Exactly.
Got it. Um, yeah, no, that, that's all I had. I guess it's more of a comment. I'd, I'd like to see some, uh, obviously wanna see this, you know, work and I, you know, I made the same argument with the, the Starbucks, well, I guess we'll get in town comments, but that's all the questions I had.
Um, I've got a question, and this is probably obvious and implied, but I hate assuming. So, um, I'm assuming you already have permission to use the Stop and Shop parking lot from whoever, right? To make sure. Yeah, oh, it's, oh, okay, that's even easier, perfect. And that's a great use of it too. The, the other question I have is, uh, the patio gate that I see that's right over there, is that, uh, is that like general egress or is that just for sort of emergency egress or? I, I, I heard your comment on the, uh, the hostess will seat, but, uh, please come to the mic, I'm sorry, so people at home could hear.
Michael Hamlin for Wooden Tap. So the patio, yeah, you can't just walk out, you have to go back out through the building. Unless there's a fire, then you can go out through, through those gates.
Emergency egress only.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, cool.
And then I, I also wanted to add too, because the parking requirement for, you know, like a special apartment for this, a lot of it is becoming, or is, has become an issue because of the patio and adding those extra seats. I mean, we have ten restaurants in Connecticut, nine of them have patios. If the patio's full outside, never in twenty years has the restaurant been, say, more than like half full.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not an extreme circumstance where every seat's gonna be filled in the restaurant.
We hope it is for your sake, but we hear you.
I'd like to see it, I don't need it, but it, it would, it'll be just fine the way it, you know, it'll operate that based upon that. And that's why a lot of times when you put, build a patio, you're adding another hundred something seats, which requires another, you know, fifty spots or whatever. But it doesn't necessarily mean that there's that type of demand for the parking per se.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else, any other questions? I guess Alison, town comments?
Uh, so the, the comments, uh, you know, we got the usual health department comments on, you know, required permitting and the license commission has actually already approved the, um, liquor license for this establishment so that they're, uh, on their way with those two entities. But the, the concern is, is the, is the crosswalk, um, largely because there isn't a stop in both directions, there's only a stop in one direction. And that, uh, yielding traffic tends to go pretty quickly in that location. So, yeah, you know, there's a police officer there because it is a challenging intersection. So I, I, the town, you know, we do have some concerns about crossing of, even if it's just employees, it is, it's a tough, it's a tough spot.
Did they provide suggestions or anything?
I, the rapid flashing beacons that you had mentioned, that's the flashing lights would probably be the, and, and the lighting, um, would probably be the two. If, if it's to be in that location, those would be the two recommendations. But beyond that, it's, there, there's not much that can be done, um, as far as driver behaviors go. It's just really hard to, hard to change that.
All right, thank you. Yeah, sure.
And you would be willing to put in the flash and the beacon lights with the-
So there would be like, just like crosswalk signs basically on the sides and then if someone was gonna cross, you'd-
Press the button and then the, it looks like, yes, and it looks like a little person walking?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, um. All right, I guess, uh, if, if you want, you can take a seat. Uh, thank you very much, appreciate it. Um, I don't see, uh, any audience members, but any audience have any comments or questions? I guess, uh, could entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right. Any discussion?
I think that if, I feel comfortable with those lights being put up and if they can change the lighting instead of in the parking lot out. But the main concern is if they could put up the beacon lights, that's, people will see that in the dark because they're bright. That would, to me, that would help a lot.
Yeah, I agree, I think-
And if they're willing to do it?
Yeah.
I'm good.
I agree, I think that'd be a good condition to, to add. The lighting, I, you know, I don't know, I did go and look at it, I, I didn't look close enough for the actual light to see if turning it would, uh, you know, I, I don't, they also have to keep the, the light on the property, so you have to be wary of that too, because we don't want light pollution. So it's like there's, I, I, I mean, I think the lights, the flashing lights for the walkway are a big step in the right direction to get people's attention because that's really what it's all about and that's kind of all you could ask for. If they still blow it and, I mean, you know, they probably were going to regardless of what we did.
Maybe this is a question for Al. If there is a, an issue with the lighting on that, on the right of way there, does that become the restaurant's responsibility or is that the, um, owner of the, the whole property, the, the shopping center?
Uh, it's sort of like a shared responsibility, so the, the shopping center owns the land that the restaurant is located on, so they're, they're like the landlord effectively. And in any case where you have a landlord that has rights over a large swath with multiple tenants, that it, there's, has to be a cooperative sort of agreement. So the landlord has to be, has to sign on to any changes that are made and who ultimately pays for it or oversees the work is negotiated between the landlord and the tenant.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, a particular intersection is just a madhouse during the day, in the evening time. I, I, I can't see them putting the raised, cause it's on a curve, right?
Sorry.
I just, uh, you know, we're, we're really good about these things, we always want, I hate seeing like empty buildings. We were good with the Starbucks because they created some like eighteen car drive-through and, um, same thing with like tandem, everybody could park in back and nobody had to walk across the street. I, I would really wanna see something, you know, I guess, I don't, I don't know, it's just, it's just right there where the left stops, these people come around the curve. I, I don't know what else we could do other than the flashing signs, but I just, I don't know.
Yeah, I've kind of, as I've been listening to the presentation and, you know, as I looked at the plan earlier this week, I was kind of thinking, would if it were down farther? It gives people a little bit longer vision as they're coming around. I kinda like that it's on the end, I think it makes sense from the Stop and Shop parking lot side of things to, to cross. I, I don't know if it would benefit us enough. I don't know that it really accomplishes anything more than what we're already doing by having the signs flashing should a pedestrian want to, to, to cross that. I also like the idea that their, their goal, which seems like a good one, to have employees park over there instead of the guests, makes a lot more sense because employees are used to crossing that every day. And they're less likely to be caught up in conversation with friends as they're walking across too. I would imagine, you know, whoever's gonna park over there's gonna park over there if they want to, but I do like that idea.
I don't know if it's too late to ask this, the-
Yeah, public hearing's closed.
Okay, so maybe, maybe you could answer this, Al. The, um, the road around the restaurant, is that one way or is it?
No, it's, you can go in both directions. The, the parking lot, you mean? Yeah, it's, it's, it, that won't change from how Corabas had, had been using it.
Gee, I, I guess I would sign on if, if we made it a condition that they put the, what, I, I don't know the exact terminology of those particular stop signs.
Rapid flashing beacons.
Rapid flashing beacons and then, what did, what did he say, turn the light?
Um, I-
Can they, can they do that?
Yeah, I, I would imagine turning the light could, could be done, I just wonder if, if it will leave a dark spot in their parking lot that will need to be accommodated.
I, I wouldn't turn the light, I'd just double side it.
Yeah, so adding lighting.
Double side, yeah.
Yeah. Just a- a- adding lighting on the, uh, what side of the intersection is that?
I, if, I would, if you wanted to add that-
The west side.
I, I like it, yeah. I think lighting would really help. It's dark if I'm remembering it correctly, over there.
Yeah.
It's been less of an issue because if it's just traveling traffic, your headlights are on and you're illuminating it yourself, but for pedestrians, it's obviously not the case. Other than that, I think it looks good, I like the idea of the, uh-
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this, this looks good.
Excited to see somebody come in.
Me too.
Yeah, likewise. Getting hungry. Do you guys have anything else you wanna discuss or are you, uh, prepared to make a motion?
Do you want some wording for conditions?
I can do it here.
Um, so rapid flashing beacons shall be installed on either side of the proposed crosswalk. And, um, lighting shall be added to the west side of the crosswalk.
All right, I move to, uh, approve the special permit application submitted in accordance with section three hundred dash seven point seven to allow for the operation of an eight thousand four hundred and twenty-five square foot, three hundred and ten seat restaurant with a twenty-eight hundred square foot patio and additional one hundred and twelve outdoor seats, all of the property located at nine fifty-five Riverdale Street in the planned unit development district. The approval is subject to twelve standard conditions plus the following special condition. One, all proposed traffic safety improvements, including installation of a crosswalk across Morgan Road Extension, shall be completed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Two, rapid flashing, uh, beacons shall be installed on each side of the proposed sidewalk or crosswalk rather. And then three, lighting shall be added to the west side of the crosswalk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Abstained? All right. Looks like you've got it.
All right. Thank you.
All right, welcome. Good luck. All right, we've got acceptance of minutes of the meeting February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two? I think you were here, Bev. Now, waiting for a motion to approve the minutes.
Send it to Alison, she's-
Thank you, goodnight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Perfect, aye. Uh, act items, no? All right. Site plan, looks like we're good. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, goodnight with Springfield.